Did consider, they were able to unanimously make a recommendation as we discussed in the work session and you see here of adjusting the starting times. That committee's recommendation is to move the starting times for the high schools at 7:30, the middle schools at 8:15, and keep the elementary schools at 9 o'clock. So as a result of that committee recommendation, I do recommend approval of their recommendation.
So we have a recommendation to approve the committee's report?
That's correct.
Let's get a motion on the floor. Motion approved?
I will have the motion to approve.
Second.
Second. You're on the table.
Okay. All right. Mr. Ray, we talked about this at length during the work session. We've had the report. Each of us has had the report of the committee before us for many days now. And so I would just like to get the start. As you can see, the start would be, the motion would be to move the start time of the high school from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30. The start time for the middle schools would be moved from 8:00 a.m. to 8:15. And the start time for the elementary schools would remain at 9:00 a.m. There were also some discussion about the buses and the time for the buses would be reduced from one hour to 45 minutes based upon a discussion we had with Durham on if that would be possible to reduce that. So that reduces time to shorten our own bus. Let me ask you this, Mr. Ray, or Mr. Jones. Have we been, have the numbers of the actual cost of this, have those numbers been refined or have they, are they not what they were?
They have not been refined as far as I know, but still is the estimate.
They were, they were basically, Mr. Wright, as I mentioned, they were based on the current contract that we're under under Durham. The prices quoted to us on day rates for buses. There are some provisions in the contract that say if we modify, you know, a particular number of buses, the contract could be, could even be renegotiated. But this small number of buses doesn't push that trigger.
And that's right. And that small number is, it's...
Four. It's in my report.
Okay, okay.
Six or seven.
I thought it was seven.
He said seven.
Yeah, seven. Okay, okay.
Four hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred people.
Okay. Less than a half, on the south side of a half a million dollars.
Barely.
Yeah, barely. Yeah.
Next year.
When would, when would we begin discussions with Durham about amending that contract?
Well, I don't think it requires an amendment of a contract. I think it just requires adding some bus routes. So we're going to have to immediately, depending on which way this vote goes.
Okay.
And now I think we've already, obviously, in deriving these numbers, Ms. Wright's had several discussions with them. So she derived those numbers from talks with Durham.
Okay. All right. All right, I'll open it up for questions and discussion.
When's the earliest time approximately that a child is getting on the bus right now? And then what time next year will that same child get on the bus?
I can take that and then he can back down. I know it's not exact, but just... 6:00 a.m. is currently the earliest pickup time. It's probably referred to that. I think the Cali Plantation, the Wood Creek Park, that was either the farthest from the school or opposite the first pickup times. As mentioned, state statute says the child can be legally transported for 90 minutes in the morning, 90 minutes in the afternoon. Luckily, our area is not large, so large that that has to occur. That's 6:00 a.m. is the, or the first pickup. As Mr. Osborne noted, this will be referred in our report. We, we have, as a committee, urged or consented a pledge and think that there's no issue with this, that no child will get up 4:00, 6:00, or 4:05. So although it's a 30-minute change in bell time, it's a 45-minute net gain of mail for the students who have to travel the fastest. And that can be accomplished, we've run scenarios with the buses, with the seven additional buses, that that can be accomplished. So it would be a 45-minute, 45-minute delay in the morning for the students the fastest. Now, obviously, if you live across the street from the school, learning is going to be very much. But for those who live the fastest, it's like 45 minutes.
If you kept the start times at the same time and you adjusted those bus, kind of sweeps that 45 minutes, is, would that require additional buses? And that's where that, most of that cost comes from?
That's correct. Just to give an example, let's say a typical bus makes 13 to 15 stops. We would take the last five stops off of the bus and ship those to another bus. So it reduces the total amount of traffic time in order for times to spend transporting, transporting.
Do we know how many students are getting picked up at 6:00? What you're saying, a lot of students are being picked up before 6:00?
I don't, I don't have the exact number. I mean, say 6:00, 8:00, 9:00, probably a small handful, but in that 6 to 6:15 range, 6 to, a substantial number. There are students that are on, for example, the Shelby Drive, and those that are in the north part of Coggerville.
Well, it could cross the moon.
But I don't have the exact figure for these, so I'm sorry.
So am I hearing this right that there's at least one or two advantages for the, for that scenario? One is that with no child getting on a bus any later than, or any earlier than 6:45, there's a, for some students, a 45-minute gain in time presumably that they could be sleeping. I mean, they got to get on the bus. That's one advantage is that more kids will be getting more sleep than you would think initially. And then the other advantage would be kids would have 45 minutes that they might be standing in the dark, that you would have, you know, more, more kids would be waiting for the bus in daylight, not in dark.
Correct. And they might be spending that, Chairman, also, the bus ride would be reduced from a potentially 45-minute bus ride now to only a 30-minute bus ride because we hope to have buses ride 15 minutes before the start of the school day. So now they're riding from 6:00 to 6:45. Under this scenario, they'd ride from 6:45 to 7:15. So they'd be spending a half an hour less daily on bus, 15 minutes less in the morning, 15 minutes less in the afternoon.
Okay. All right.
When we had the children still going to Houston, were they getting bused at 6:00 awesome or...
On the south end, a lot of them weren't, sure. I mean, in Legacy Shelby, we had, you know, when, for instance, Principal of Houston High School a long time, and the attendance has all changed so many years, but yes, we had, in some years, students in Eads, Countrywood, North 64, that area, sure, so the 6:00, 6:05. That's, that's, that's been in practice a while, sure.
5:45.
5:45 in some cases, way back.
I was driving Center Street earlier this week.
Did you like it in there?
I know. And right there past the BFW, there's apartments right there. And it was, it was a few minutes after 6:00, and there were a group of children standing there waiting to get on the bus. And it was dark. It was bright.
Mr. Jones, does, I'm trying to remember our discussion last time. And wasn't there, wasn't there some type of commitment? And I'm trying to remember, excuse me, I'm obviously sleep deprived. No, it's a joke. 30 minutes is due to the addition of the buses and the expense, but part of the 30 minutes is just a different way that we're going to do things? Is that correct? Or am I misremembering?
If, this is what I can say, we could keep the same number of buses and we could adjust the start times, but we couldn't condense the stagger time to 45 minutes. It would be a 7:30, 8:30, 9:30 start time. So the only way that we can condense to 45 is to add additional buses. So yes, it's a, it's a commitment to start later, but it's a commitment to add additional buses so that the travel time is less and the stagger time is less. So it's almost a, it's a kind of a two-tier commitment.
My question is, the half million dollars generated, can we, is it dollar per minute, is it a straight-line equation? Does, is there any time to be gained without the half million dollars?
Obviously, anyway, the same number of children have to be transported.
Ms. Wright, oh, sorry, I don't mean that. But Mr. Jones, the, and we've heard from Mr. Osborne and several other of the pro, pro-later start time folks, that there's this time and motion optimization software that FedEx is going to come today. Have we seen anything like that throughout this process?
We, we use software, I don't know if ours is the FedEx software, but we've been using software for route optimization for a lot of years.
So basically, this is what it's going to be. There's not a, there's not a white knight riding in to save us more time with the same dollars.
Not that I'm aware, but there's better software than anything that might do it. But I've got full confidence and, I mean, that has been doing a lot of years. So the software that we've been using now is, because I don't know if you recall, and a lot of the parents will know this, at the beginning of the year, we design routes and then we always adjust and level routes. So all of that is due to, you know, using software and, you know, load counts and all that type of stuff. So the software we're using now is, as we changed several years ago. Mr. Simpson did it way before that. So we're pretty current with our software that we use that is typically used by a lot of other districts.
My concerns, well, I have another question. Is there any study out there that tells us what type of return we'll be getting on investment for this half million dollars? Are we looking at, are we doing this for a couple of tenths on ACT composite score? Are we looking for, are we looking for what? Because I know Houston, our friends to the west, have seen an increase in score, but some could say that that might be tied to their new stringent requirements for some of their out-of-district students, for their new honors program, which boosts that as opposed to healthier kids. Because, you know, all things being equal, there's no reason, if this thing didn't cost us any money, there's no reason in the world not to start later.
Hi there, it's currently 7:30 p.m. It'll be a cloudy day with a high at 62 degrees.
And so it is about money. And it is about what you get through money. And I can't look past the empirical data that I've seen in my own home. And I see what happens with regards to this because I have two young adults now who are gainfully employed, great citizens, did great in college, all due to the fact, they always say that they were never overmatched in Carrington High School. I mean, in, in college because of the training that they received in Carrington High School. And bless their hearts, they started at 7:00 a.m. And so when we start looking at this, this half million dollars that we're talking about, and I look back to the way that teenage behavior, we're not adding, we're not making a day 25 hours long. It's kind of like daylight saves time. We're just fooling ourselves. We're going to suddenly, because we're starting school later, they're going to get in bed at the same time, and that will translate to more sleep. And I know that there's study after study, but you know, at one point in time, they told me eating eggs is going to kill them too. And then they changed. And so everything done in a vacuum, and done in an academic study, is something that, that we've got to take into account of it. But I don't know what data, what are we getting for the half million dollars? That's my biggest question. That's what I have to answer to people who, who ask me that, say, I don't know that there's any promise of anything. We're going to make, we've been asked to pick a loser and a winner in this, in an argument that may be moot for any type of results. It's just, just people's preference. And this is a hard, this is, this is a hard decision to make. And I'm, I'm sitting here struggling, trying to grasp that. The one thing, again, that I, that I do hold my hat on is, is that, you know what? Yeah, we, we need to get those kids off that bus stop at 6:00 a.m. But you know what? We can slide everything within hour time, and it doesn't cost us a half million dollars to do that. That's our, because that's what we're talking about doing, that, that's, we can, we can get those children off that bus stop at no additional expense. And I look here and I try to find out where the money's going to come from. And to the, to the general public, it's great because we're not going to have, and to our board, we're not going to have to ask, we're not proposing that we have to ask for more additional funds from the Board of Mayor and Alvin. We're going to take this out of our own pocket and put it into another pocket. But it's not like we have infinite resources in that pocket we're pulling it from. And I sit here and I see we've got six and a half million dollars of vote payoff liability. This, we could be applying a half million dollars. Okay, we apply a half million, we change the way we do business to find this half million dollars. That means our liability will be funded in 12 years. We're on a 12-year payment plan even if we do this. And so, and, and the, the start time people are committed and they've, they've been diligent. And I say start pro-later start time. That's, that's an unfair characterization. The folks who have spent their time and done their research have been passionate and diligent in bringing us information. And to that, I salute you. I may, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this, honestly, but I salute you for your diligence in this. And, but I'm, it seems like we're talking about feelings and not facts. And, and some things can be controlled by self-discipline or discipline versus un, because I think the kids that, that are good students will go to bed at the appropriate time, get, take advantage of the extra hour sleep, but we're still going to be faced with kids sleeping in school. It just is. And because nobody, not everybody's committed to their education in the same manner. So I just want to know what we would get for the money and why suddenly we can come up with a half million dollars if we, is this our highest funding priority within our budget? And I would challenge that fact. I think that we need generating fund balance for the rocky roads ahead and us banking on BEP growth rates when, yeah, the tax revenues for the state are coming on in and they're, and they're, they're good for now. But 10 years ago, they fell, fell by 700 million dollars, too much in the run, a low projection. So I know that tough times can come. My question is just whether or not this is, what are we investing in? And what are we shorting ourselves to invest in? How do we measure results?
I can help with deal what you're asking. I mean, obviously, if you start later, you can measure absenteeism, you can measure tardiness, you can, you know, those are things that are easy to measure, that if there is a positive, that might be one benefit of it. The benefits on, of anything else, the, the non-measurable things that have been mentioned in a lot of the comments and a lot of the things that we've talked about, I, I don't have a magic answer for some of those, honestly. Those are things that you would hope would happen, as you've heard people say, that if one kid, we lose one less kid a year or one less, you know, issue a year, is it worth that? Or 10 or whatever? Those are things that I can't measure. The budget piece, we've sent you some figures on that. So, you know, I, I agree with you. That's been the challenge with all of us, as we've sat around the table trying to hammer, first of all, you know, where we're going to be in two years, three years, four years, as, as we've committed a lot of resources and time to new school, that particular piece, but, you know, trying to level out and get the, you know, keep this financial stability going that we've had in the years past. There's, as with any budget, if you vote to approve this, we'll, we'll find money and tweak it and do what we need to do, which I think without having any minimal impact on programming. But yes, it's going to have to come from some pie into another, sure.
Well, do we think we're going to eliminate drowsy driving completely by changing the time to 7:30? Because I look at these traffic numbers and it's kind of frightening to think that we're going to take all these kids that are currently driving, you know, 6:15, 6:30, experiencing sort of vibrations and then move them in, basically, with all the business people heading out to work, to think that there's not going to be more accidents? And we're saying that the chance of having drowsy drivers, of accidents being more severe is greater? That's frightening too. Well, I, that doesn't worry me from the standpoint of, are we setting the kids up to have more R T traffic at new school just by putting them in more traffic?
I don't know how to answer that one either, Ms. Kathy. I'm one that, you know, gets blasted on Twitter for patch of eyes when people don't have a problem.
How about to kind of feedback on what Kathy said, as I know we all have, that I want to say on that, that you all do not have five or four members who truly, who truly, every decision they make is made with the best interest of your child and this school district. And I know, I sat on the committee for the six months, so I, I listened and heard it all. And again, you had a committee that at the end came together and said, this is what we can all approve. And let me tell you, when it started, you had this and you had this. Now, as I studied and pondered what I was going to vote, I had to put all of the parents, vote the pro-time change, and those who were happy with it, I had to split them aside because I'm not truly, I care about those parents, but my number one reason for being here is for those kids, for those kids. And the only thing that I heard out of what our final proposal was this, and that's important to me, if I can get the kids off of the street at 6:00 in the morning in the dark to 6:45, it is worth it. If we can find some way, and I've talked with Mr. Ray too, and if we can find some way, and I know that it's going to be money, that's going to have to come from somewhere else. And I know we have the O P A, and I worry about the O P A. I know we need to give our teachers a cost of living raise, that they've waited long enough for that. So we do have all of that to wait. But my kids, those students, I want them safe. And the difference of 6:00 in the dark versus 6:45 when the sun is coming up and to have the babies in the afternoon home at 4:30, and you all know, if we go out at 4:45 right now in the wintertime, it's, it's dust. We're there. So for me, that's the big thing. It's not the difference in an ACT score. It's not the difference in what these children are going to learn because I don't, you're going to have to prove that to me, you're going to have, and I'm going to watch that for two years, but I don't think that's going to happen because I'd say, as Kevin did, I raised four children in this school district that are wonderful, great jobs, good kids. I have two grandchildren in college right now, one in her second year of grad school for PT school. She is a straight A student from the time she started that bachelor's through almost her second year of PT school. I have a grandson that, Lord help us, we don't know how this happened, but we, you know, rode him the whole time in, in high school. He's at Texas A&amp;M in engineering and he is tutoring kids in calculus. So there you go. So you know what? We're giving our kids what they need. They're not missing out because they're coming to school at 7:00 in the morning. So I don't think it's about that at all. It's not about the difference because our schools, we have great teachers, we have great resources. Everyone is doing what needs to be done in our schools. So that's not going to change, I don't believe. Because I say, you're going to have to prove that to me for that to happen. And one last thing, I do want to clarify this. The statement was made that all of the Germantown students were part of the Germantown schools and that, when the statement was made here, that we served all of our Carrington students, that there was kind of a, put down that we were implying that maybe because of that, we had some children who were not as academically gifted. Well, we do serve all of theirs, but, and they do serve all of their Germantown, but what you all must remember, when you want to compare their ACT and what they do to what Carrington High School does, they do have open enrollment that is based on, first, the parents, the families who work as part of the town, they have number one priority. They can bring their, their employees can bring their students, their kids in. But next, it is their honors academy, their arts academy, and there's one, what's that other academy?
Leadership.
Leadership academy. So that's why they might have a one-tenth of a point ACT score higher than ours. You had 300 or 400 of those kids in there. Give us that and let's see what ours is. So that's my say.
I think that my concerns are a situation to where it's, because we've always done it that way, it's the way we need to continue to do it. That's not it at all. I think this is a problem, particularly, and again, you and I share that same concern about those early bus, bus stop kids. It's a, it's a problem, to me, that is the problem.
It is.
And that's what needs to be, a search needs to be for, is how do we solve that problem? And as opposed to trying to manufacture more hours in a day.
Well, what, we aren't going to manufacture, like you said, you're not going to manufacture more hours in a day. But, you know, I deal, I deal a lot at FedEx with, you know, pilots who work at night and, and work on the backside of the clock when their circadian rhythm is, is not aligned with their work hours. And we talk about, you know, things that we can do as a company to give pilots an additional sleep opportunity. You're not making them sleep, you're giving them a sleep opportunity. That's the reason we have sleep rooms in our hubs so that they can go, some do, some don't. You can't make them sleep. Some try to sleep and they can't, you know. But, but I, I do think that giving them, giving our kids an additional sleep opportunity, and, and I just can't, there are one other statistics, I just can't, you know, I'm not generally a follow-the-leader kind of person, you know, trying, trying to say just because they do it, we should do it. But I do think that, that the fact that, you know, 4% of schools nationwide have a 7:00 a.m. school, start time, that tells you something. And, and so, you know, if you're 4%, you're, you're somewhat of an outlier when in terms of what schools, I mean, I grew up in Kingsport, daughter's been in high school, and for the entire time, it was 8:15, I'm sorry, 8:30 through 15, our, our start time. Well, they're still that way, and we're outperforming them academically. And, and, but you can't, you can't reduce it to cause and effect. That's, that's one thing I, you know, I've heard, okay, if we change the start time, you're going to have less, you're going to have less wrecks, you're going to have less athletic injury, you're going to have less suicide. But I, I don't, I don't, that, that kind of analysis, I think, is, is so crude, it's probably worthless in terms of that. It's just cause and effect. in terms of that, it's just cause and effect. But I, I do think that, as Wanda said, and as Kevin said at the last minute, at our latter work session, you know, having for a, an, an half a million dollars, it's a lot of money, but I, I do think that to move and to, to move kids off the street in dark, I think that's worth, I can't quantify it, but it sure worth something. And it's worth a lot to me because I think that, that is a dangerous situation. And, you know, you got communities like my subdivision that have sidewalks, you got kids walking down there at, in the dark to the, to the bus stop. So, I mean, there's, I've, I've got real big feelings about a lot of this stuff, but I, I do think that for the investment that we've got, there will be several good effects I've seen. But, you know, I believe it up to each of you to decide whether you, you think it's, you can quantify it as on the plus, plus side or the, or the minus side, so.
I would, I would ask one thing. And, and, and Mr. Jones said something about last time, and that this is, and it brings up this Turner's point earlier tonight, is that we review things on an annual basis. And if this is voted for and is approved, I would certainly say that we label it a pilot program and see if there's any benefit, measurable benefit, and if we watch and see and find out that it is indeed worth the money. Because I don't want it to become etched in stone because, hey, this is, this is why, because, again, much about your analysis with the things that have been presented does not sway me. It's all back to what happens on those bus stops is the only thing, tangible, real things that sway me. And so I would just say as, as a board moving forward, that this become an, that if it's approved tonight, that this, and even if it's not approved, it's turned down, I would say we continue to look at the issue. Because that's, that's what I'm hating about this whole deal, is it's by golly, it's a win and loss tonight for somebody. As opposed to saying, us looking at this and saying, we have an issue, let's try to get this because everybody can agree on these points of the issue. But regardless, we need to, we don't need this, whatever happens tonight, it doesn't need to be cast in stone.
Well, you know, Kevin, I, I, I agree with you philosophically. I think, I'm not so sure that you could, we can come up with a series of criteria, you know, absenteeism, whatever, you know, schoolyard fights, you can come up with, you know, whatever you can. And, you know, and, and, and you say, okay, it's, it's getting better or it's getting, it's getting worse. But I don't, I'm not sure you can, how you, how you can tie that to a start plan. I mean, if, if kids are, if kids are, we have less bullying or, you know, something like that, you can say, well, it's because they're rested and they're, you know, and they're, they're, they're a better spring of mind when they get to school and all that kind of stuff. But it might be, it might be due to the school mentoring program, you know, that we have, that, you know, so, you know, I mean, you know, it's just, I, I, I know what you're saying. You, you, you're an engineer and you like to see empirical results and data and that kind of thing. I, I have a hard time applying data to this.
And which is, which is, I wanna say, exactly! You just made my point!
You know, I, I, I think, I think what you can do is you can look roughly at the experience by other school systems and say, you know, they have changed and they think it's a beneficial change, know that's for something, you know?
I, I'd like to see a study for our absenteeism versus exam exemption, or mandatory exam.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's a comp, it's a complex issue and no, and no formula that you can slap down on the table and say, you know, this is the right thing to do and this is not the right thing to do. We, we don't have that.
It may depend on who you ask, too. If you ask other school systems, they'll change. Do you mix vitamins or two on whether many of them was a positive change or not? Because I've heard from some that they wish they had changed. If you're mother, great, it's like a lot of perception.
Well, and a lot of that is, you know, it, it, it costs, it costs money to change, you know, and then you get into the, you know, the qualitative question that you get is, well, well, was it worth, was it worth the money? And it's, I have a hard time answering that. Based on what, that's my next question. Well, based on what? So.
And I don't know how you measure that, and you certainly did not measure it within you. You've got to have two or three years of data to really measure, was it worth that? So as I said, to me, it had, it, my mind simply cannot sign over it all. It's not about that's the school, it's about getting those kids off of the street in the darkness. And so.
Does this proposal eliminate any children from having to come to school or go home in the dark?
If we don't give delays.
I would say, I, I don't know before we, before we fell back on the time, I don't know what the latest sunrise was of last month to know.
It was around, it was around seven o'clock.
There may be a brief period of days, you know, in the late fall where even at six forty-five, there may, it may not still be official sunrise, but very, very few, very , very few days. Out of a hundred and eighty days that a child would never have a day where he or she has to go home in the dark, you know, that would substantially reduce the percentage. And once again, we're talking about just a small number of students, just a very personal incident, you know, there may be a week, five days before the time change issue, where it may still be a little dusty over the gas, but not for weeks and weeks on six A M. I mean, weeks always in the dark.
All right, well, I think it, as Kevin said, what I say with her range, most children that are high achievers, they're gonna still be high achievers whether their school starts at seven or seven thirty. There's gonna be kids that, well, I don't have to be at school at seven thirty, so I'm gonna stay up thirty minutes later. And every kind of picking one of them is gonna go to bed with their cellphone. Yeah. But the biggest thing for me is I, I appreciate what the committee has done and the time and effort and tireless work that they've done. They came back to us with a unanimous decision. And I still have questions, a lot of it I don't, I don't agree with or have questions about, but I trust that committee and what they've done. All right, and, and carrying that just the next step over, I, I, I trust this board and I'm, whatever our decision is, I'm, I'm all for it. All right, any further discussion? Well, let's, let's take, let's take a roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yeah, Gavin. With, with, still with questions in my mind, I vote yes.
Ms. Chisholm?
With reservations but still feeling that it's the right thing for our students, I vote yes.
Ms. John?
Show me as I know, Mimi.
Chairman Hansen?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Beverly?
I've been back and forth about this all day, a lot of good ones have been made. Quarter, half a million dollars for getting the kids out of the dark seems like a whole lot of money coming on the account besides me. And I'm really concerned about putting our children and all that extra training. Because I think that that's putting them in more danger than letting them drive to school, which is much harder. So we have to have the know-it-all.
We have three yes votes, two no votes, so motion is approved.
All right, Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
Yes, sir.
That's the first vote that we has not been unanimous out of the four years together. And I'll say this, even though I was not on the prevailing side, I support this board's decision and as far as I'm concerned, this question has been answered until we bring it up in the future. But I support my fellow board members' votes and their decisions and so be it. And let's, let's get on with the, let's get on with the show.
And I agree with that, his comments, I mean, this has been a very difficult decision and I respect the committee and all of their hard work.
Well, I, as someone who voted on the prevailing side, I, I will say that every, every objection and concern that you raised is valid. And, and, you know, I'll tell you, what, you know, accidents is one of those things that is, is an empirical measurement that we can use, I mean, we can see, you can certainly track those, you know? But anyway. All right, is there any further business to come to board, Mr. Ray?
I have none, sure.
All right, anybody?
All right, we're adjourned.